Invitation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Struble.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this wonderful evening to perform city business. Please be with us and our staff as we continue to keep this community a great place to live, work, and raise a family. We are and have been very grateful for this wonderful continuing spring weather we have been experiencing and the great display of flowers to include the yellow golden display of the palaverdy trees. They even leave a wonderful color on the ground around the trees. We've been very blessed with this spring while we've been out enjoying everything that you have to display. We ask for your protective hand for our first responders in our community. We extend this to all our military members and their families and everyone associated with them wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them all home safe each and every day in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Present.
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the base hospital agreement between Scottsdale Healthcare Hospitals, DBA Honor Health, and the City of Apache Junction for tactical paramedics be approved and that the mayor is authorized to sign the agreement subject to final approval as deformed by the city attorney.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor.
Awards and proclamations, presentation of an award to Rachel Hirsch Development Officer of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And Chief, I don't have an award, so do you have one? Let me explain.
I have the award.
So, Mayor, City Council, actually you won't have to listen to me this evening because Rachel Hirsch from Mothers Against Drunk Driving is here to present the Police Department an award and I'm going to let her do the talking. So if Rachel would join me up here and I'll step away and let Rachel recognize the Police Department and specifically Ernie Eaton and a couple other officers Darren Hatch for their participation and efforts in the campaign for drunk driving reduction. Rachel.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here and giving me a few moments. I am the Development Officer with Mothers Against Drunk Driving and part of my role is to run our Walk Like Mad campaign. And that is a 5K walk that we host every year in honor and memory of victims and survivors of drunken drug driving crashes. And that walk is also a fundraiser. And part of the reason we are raising funds is to provide no-cost services to victims and survivors of impaired driving crashes and underage drinking as well as educational services to middle school and high school students. And I'm here this evening to recognize Officer Eaton as the walk team captain as well as the Apache Junction Police Department as a whole because they raised over $2,500 in support of last year's walk. They were the highest law enforcement fundraising team. We hosted competition, so this is his second year receiving this trophy, second year running. And they were the fourth overall team of the entire walk. The walk raised over $78,000 and they were our fourth highest fundraising team. So if you would allow me, I would like Officer Eaton to come up and receive his second annual trophy.
Excellent.
He's got a chance to say some words if he wants. You could say a couple of words if you'd like.
Tell us about it. We, some of us support this every year.
Hello. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Officer Eaton with the Apache Junction Police Department. I'm not big on public speaking like this, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been very involved with Mad over the last couple of years. It just started off as just getting involved and just taking my family to the walk, just me and my family. And then, and then, I don't know, I just, it was another lady before Rachel that was running the Mad Walk. And then we just had this, just networking and stuff like that, talking and stuff. And then I just got involved and I got the PD involved and we tried it out one year and it was a big success and then we just kept running with it and we made it fun because it's competing with every law enforcement department in the state of Arizona. And I just wanted to let everybody in the state know that Apache Junction, we have something to offer to the state and just put our city on the map and it's been good, good. I'm big into DUI enforcement, so I have a passion for it and I see the benefits. Mad contribute to the victims and stuff like that, so it's a good support and I welcome everybody to join the walk. It's fun.
When will the next one be?
I think it's going to be in October of this year.
So maybe we can announce that beforehand and get some other folks out there with you.
Yeah, and the city been great. I know everybody get tired of me harassing everybody for money and I've been on social media, Facebook, you name it, everything, and sending out emails weekly to people and I've been getting a lot of support from the city and even the city employers and even people from the city, the citizens. I couldn't do this without all you guys and I appreciate it.
Where's the run at?
This year is going to be at a new location. I don't have that location right now, but it usually at the Phoenix Zoo.
Okay.
But I think they changed the location this year.
But it's open to, I mean, we could come and walk or run, so it's not just police officers.
No.
It's everybody.
It's for everybody and it's a good deal because a lot of the victims of drunk drivers is there, so you can, and they share their stories and stuff, so we kind of walk with the victims there.
And so what, the way it works, I'm asking, is like I would go out and get people to pledge amount for the miles that I walk or something or just get people to donate money?
So when I started the team, I started as a team captain, I kind of put, it's on a, they have a website and you can join as a team and you create your own team. So we created one for the Apache Junction Police Department, but it's a lot of companies, there's a lot of victims that create pages. And so what you do is, is I think is like $20 to join the team and then you get other people to donate to your team and then it's just like a monopoly, you just keep, you keep building.
Building.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Proclamation for Kids to Parks Days. Whereas May 18th, 2019 is the ninth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and other health disorders. And whereas Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim to participate in Kids to Parks Day, I urge residents of Apache Junction to make time, May 18th, 2019, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And I think our chief ranger, Kelly Martin, is here and Liz as well?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say a quick few words and then I would love to have Park Ranger Supervisor Kelly Martin come up. He is super critical in making sure that our parks are safe and beautiful for all of our families, but just wanted to also mention that we have some wonderful new smaller pieces at Prospector Park that have been gone in, that have gone out earlier this year for playground equipment that we'd love the community to come out and try out. We would love people to come out to our parks every single weekend, even through the summer. I would love for the National Kids to Park Day to not be in May when it's hotter, but that's okay. This weekend we have Ralph Breaks Internet at Flatiron and so we have great things every single weekend, but on May 18th they can come out and visit the splash pad if it's warm out, our skate park, or any of our parks. And so I'd love to just invite Park Ranger Supervisor Kelly Martin to come up and receive the proclamation from you if you don't mind.
Paparazzi. Thank you. It's also the week of May 5th to 11th as Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of governments at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal justice to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk throughout participation, through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk Kathy Conley and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community. Will you?
I will accept, but I also have some staff members from the City Clerk's office that should be recognized as well, so they'll come on down.
So we get them in the light.
Come on up here.
Yeah, sorry. They just come out so much nicer.
Do we have any announcements or current events? Let's start on this side this time.
Okay. I don't have anything to put up there, but first of all, I have people ask me why I sit way over here to the edge and the reason is, it's not that I don't want to be in the camera, it's because Councilmember Evans spreads her stuff way out here that I have to be over here, so I just wanted to, just wanted to make that straight. No, a couple, about a week ago or so, I was able, I had the honor of participating in the AJUSD Senior Interview Day. It's a time when we get to have a conversations, interview, mock interviews with the, our students who are going to be graduating here in the next couple of weeks. And it's such a refreshing time to visit with those young people and hear about their dreams, their goals, their, what they want to do in the future, listen to their life's stories, where they've come from, where they're, and it's, and I keep saying this and I keep reiterating it out there, we have a great future in this country and I really look forward to watching and see what our young people are going to be doing, so that's all I've got.
You?
Okay, yes. Well, first off, I put up a, something from Casa Grande. I attended their grand opening of their recreation center. If you notice their building's a little different, they got red around it, so it sticks out so you can really find it easily, which I had to use because I got lost. But it's a very unique situation, it's a unique building, and they're also joined up with the local Boys and Girls Club to be part of the same building and the same activities there. So they have a huge activity and it's a real nice venue and a good building. So I wanted to pass that on as if you're down in the Casa Grande area and stop in and look at the wonderful red outlined building. I also wanted to make a quick comment concerning the student interviews. I also attended and it was very enlightening to hear, like Jeff said, the kids, what their goals are. And I had one that I was interviewing and actually, really more than anything else was if she was going to go working for me, she was hired right then and there. She was so enthusiastic and so going forward and already had her mind made up as to what she was going to be doing. And she even told me, she says, by 10 years I want to be doing this, in 20 years I want to be doing this, and she's already laid it out. And that's a senior in high school and she's definitely going forward. So the kids are great and it was an enjoyable time to interview the kids and see what their goals and their prospects we're looking forward to.
Krista.
It looks like it's the night of bragging on our school district. Couple things this year in addition to what's already been talked about. This year, 2019, the Apache Junction Unified School District, for the first time, they awarded Teachers of the Year. And I just want to send a shout out to those teachers that won. Cheryl Anderson from the Apache Junction High School. Wendy, forgive me if I mispronounce, Wendy McQuillan from Cactus Canyon Junior High and Marina Renzulli from Four Peaks Elementary. Those were selected as Teachers of the Year. They were selected from peers outside of the school district, people that were within the community and outside of the community that did not necessarily know these people personally. So there was no, you know, knowing somebody and choosing them, they won fair and square from what they had written. And then we did something really neat, Rookie of the Year. So a first-year teacher was awarded. I just get goosebumps when I think about that. It's pretty awesome thinking about a first-year teacher and the struggles that they have coming out. Tanya Kopke was awarded the Teacher of the Year. I just wanted to say congratulations to those teachers for their hard work in educating our students in our school district. And then last night I had the opportunity to attend the 2019 Scholarship Awards at the high school. And you talk about being able to have bragging rights for the kids in our community, tens of thousands of dollars that these kids have earned and have been awarded for college scholarships. It's absolutely amazing. Our kids are awesome. They're awesome kids, so go Prospectors. Thank you, Your Honor.
Robert.
Well, I'll speak for the smaller guy, the Imagine Prep Charter School located in Apache Junction. They had a career day, not quite the interview process that the high school had, but you had, all the way from the Merchant Marines were there, the Superstition Fire Medical were there, EBIT was there, the Animal Control was there, the news was there for any child looking to get into journalism. And it's a, it's a pretty big deal for these guys. They go and they talk to the representatives of each of these companies to learn different avenues they could take to see what, you know, they want to do in the future. And it's a, it's a pretty big event they put on, just to name a few. I thought I was going to have some pictures up here, Mr. Bravo, but I guess not. So I just wanted to know that, let you guys know that our other high school in Apache Junction is doing their, their share to, to help motivate the kids of the city and again, they also receive scholarships. It wasn't a scholarship night, but I do know that children at that school also receive scholarships, so it's a pretty big deal for them and I wish them all the best of luck.
Robin.
Wow, you know, I know it was a long time ago, but kudos to the Parks and Rec Department for their successful Easter egg hunt. It was absolutely great. I've never laughed so hard in my life. One gentleman, as I was stamping kids' hands and helping them onto the field, one gentleman said, "Do you live out here?" And I said, "No." And he said, "You're here every year I bring my kids." Okay. And the senior interviews agreed, they were awesome. I certainly didn't have that kind of focus as a senior, I know that. Kudos to the Water Department for the Water Festival. It was incredible. We had four schools there. The kids learned all about the water cycle, they were enthusiastic. Then the Fire Department came and sprayed them down and cooled them down, it was wonderful. The Marathon gave their money to many, many worthwhile causes. I can't remember the numbers, but it was staggering, the amounts of money they were able to give to the kids in this community, to the schools, et cetera. And then there was the Mayor's Breakfast. That was a wonderful opportunity to get together with, with some of the civic leaders in the community. So all in all, it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks.
And if you wonder where I sit in the middle, it's because Gail sits over there too. So no, we had the...
And I'm in the middle.
The Mayor's Breakfast was bigger and better this year and we had, you don't realize how many people are out there to help from all the county and the city organizations, so if you have any kind of a charity organization that helps people, look for that next year and you'll be invited. And last week we had our first meeting with the Founder's Day, the Centennial Planning Group. Of course, our Founder's Day is coming up in 2022, so we're planning it already and that is going to tentatively be the first Thursday of every month at 6 o'clock in the library in a meeting room. So a lot of exciting things and we can never have too many volunteers, we had a pretty good turnout, but we need more and we need to make this really impactful. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. I also want to hand my kudos over to Heather and her team, which is just Heather, to be able to provide this, this, this east, our Mayor's Breakfast has just been growing and it's been super neat to see 90 people there. We had to move into the Recreation Center's big room and the energy and the dynamic that was there was just awesome in terms of helping one another and watching out for each other. Councilmember Barker, I have the number here for the Lost Dutchman Marathon recognition of sponsors. This year, the amount was $70,000. So $70,000 because it's totally ran by volunteers, came back into community organizations, so super huge kudos to them. And over a 17-year period, they're at about $638,000. So the number is very significant and very helpful. One of the goals of Apache Junction is to be able to help bring impressions and to be able to show ourselves in a way and that is connected to our community and one of the areas that I'm really, really proud of is in, is with our coordination with Arizona State University. And this week I received this really neat book or it's a pamphlet, I'm not sure when you'll get this, but I know it'll come to you. It's called Community Social Embedding. It's one of these things where you look in here and you wait to see something that's going on in Gilbert or you wait to see that's going on in Avondale. Well, not anymore. Page 22 is a wonderful picture. It's one of these that has like on the top left here of Rudy Askevius, Senior Planner, Sustainable Cities Network Director, Ann Reichman welcomes Rudy Askevius, Apache Junction Senior Planner, to the Project Cities Spring 2018 Students Showcase where five classes presented. I just wanted to highlight and say thank you to each of you for your support as we've worked and coordinated these projects with Arizona State University and we are their inaugural city and it's awesome to see and they keep having opportunities for us to coordinate projects with them. We've tried to coordinate these projects because they, they bring us together with the students who have a whole different perspective on how things maybe should be here 30 years from now, one. And two, we don't have huge consulting budget. We don't have the ability to go do $50,000, $100,000 budgets for consultants, so we get some expertise, we get some real good thinking, and it's leading us to discussions about solid waste pickup and an enhanced discussion about how we're going to do our dog park and some other things included. So I offer you this photo, this is the next one that we've done as part of the Project Cities, which is how are we going to keep transitioning those mobile home parks in our community along, as we, as we work with our mobile homeowners, mobile park owners and our residents. And that's the next one that we'll have one of the students who's a master's degree student come in and talk to us, hopefully if Larry can get her in before the school year's out or it's already out, but before she gets on her way. So that's my report tonight and thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about the planning department.
Public hearing for consideration of application for a new Bar Six liquor license for Deborah Lee Wohl, Lucky Skies. This would have been Kathy, so you're going to kick it off.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first liquor license is for Lucky Skies, a bar and grill located at 945 East Scenic Street. This is a Series 6 license and once issued is transferable from person to person or location to location within the same county, allows the holder both on and off sale retail privileges. Comments have been received from the Planning and Zoning, Building and Safety, Police Department, and the Superstition Fire and Medical District. Those comments are included in the record packet. Staff is present to answer any questions you may have regarding their comments and recommendations. The applicant was notified of the hearing tonight and asked to be present to answer any questions council may have.
Is the applicant here and would they like to say anything? You don't have to, but if you would like to, you can.
Hi, I'm Deb. A lot of you probably already know me because I own Lucky Strikes in Apache Junction also. I want to thank you for the opportunity to take on this historical building and try to preserve the history of Skies. We've done some changes already and I think everybody will like it. I also want to mention that I will be giving a 100th birthday party at Skies on May 12th for my brother-in-law that served in Normandy. He's a vet. The veterans will be honoring him and giving him awards. It'll be from one to four. If any of you would like to come, you're more than welcome.
What day was that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
What day?
It's May 12th.
May 12th.
One to four. Yeah. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
So are you going to keep the Lucky Strikes going also?
For now, yeah. Yeah, I am. Lucky Strikes is leased, so I have to see how, how the lease goes. It's up in a year, so I'll have to negotiate the lease. Skies I bought outright, so I want to restore it and bring it back to what it used to be.
A lot of history out there.
Yeah, there is a lot of history. We've actually opened up the wall into the banquet room so you can see the mural now from the whole bar.
Well, that would be interesting to have that for our Founder's Day Centennial Celebration too, if you could come up with any new pictures or any history like that.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
It doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion among the council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a new Bar Six liquor license submitted by Deborah Lee Wohl, LLC for Lucky Strikes, 945 East Scenic Street, Apache Junction.
Lee Wohlley LLC for Lucky Strikes, 945 East Scenic Street, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Strubel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor.
Consideration of application for a new Bar Six liquor license for Dwayne Ernest Carbo for the Tipsy Cow Smokehouse and Spirits.
Your Honor, this liquor license is for Tipsy Cow Smokehouse, located at 185 North Apache Trail, Suite 6. This also is a Series Six license. Comments have been received from the Planning and Zoning Department, Building and Safety, the Police Department, and Superstition Fire and Medical District. They are included in the agenda packet. The Building and Safety Department is recommending denial of the application. Staff is present to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant was notified of the hearing tonight and asked to be present for any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just here to answer any questions, maybe if we can work this out or to get through the approval.
Does anyone have any questions? What is the, the reason that they're recommending denial?
So we have Dave's on our building official here, but I think what I would like to communicate to you is that over the last week, the owner and the leasing attendant, and as well, Dave, have been working closely together and making great progress. We do have, time a year and a half ago, when we worked with Mr. Carbo on some issues, and, and he's aware that we, we have encouraged him in education on terms of commercial building permit to come in. But I, I really feel like that this is the liquor license, this is an opportunity to maybe ask staff what those issues specifically are, and then you could decide to, you know, consider a recommendation to the Liquor Board for approval for either the condition of, of, of future, building, meeting the building code with City of AJ, or you, you have an option, I think, to continue. Is that correct, Joel?
Well, you may continue it, correct. Not too long, though, because you don't have much time to act on it.
So before we let him sit down, can we ask if, Robin, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something with Bryant. Is this not the same restaurant situation where we were promised monthly updates on how they were doing on the building codes, et cetera? Is this not the same one?
Different.
Last year?
Different restaurant, same.
Same.
Individual.
Individual. That's probably the best way to say that, yeah. It was Cobb's, yeah. We worked through that as well, we're kind of doing the same thing now.
This is across from Flatiron Park.
This, this business right is across from Flatiron, yeah.
Right.
Krista, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask, Joel, you, I think it's important to remember, you said the word recommendation, so when we vote on this here, we're not essentially voting yes or no on whether or not the liquor license is approved. That's the state that does that. We are making a recommendation. So regardless of what our vote is, the state makes the final decision. Is that correct?
Counselman Rizzi, that is correct.
Thank you.
And since he is working on it daily, we could also do a yes recommendation if he promises to continue to work with the, with our department. That's, that's one of our options, so when you guys make a motion, we could...
Could we have Dave come up and explain to us what the problem is here?
Yes, that's what I would like. And remember, it's also a public hearing after Dave speaks. Your Honor and Council, before the, Dwayne relocated to this location, we met with, Planning and Building met with Mr. Lightzel, the new owner of the strip mall. We went through some things and discussed some different options and told them, you know, what we thought would need to be done or applicable to their plans. We then met, I think, a week or two later with Dwayne, kind of went through the same At some point, they went ahead and did some alterations to the building, they added some sinks, and then added a bar. And so those elements do require permits. There's some issues with them, like, you know, I've only seen the outside sink on the back and stuff, but they, they don't meet code and stuff like that. So wanted to try to get those things resolved, so we asked them, you know, to get a permit in that. So we've been working through that, there were some contractor issues, discussion about, you know, who needed to be responsible for the bar and, and what was applicable. So I think we're in process and trying to work it through. Just, we did, you know, they came to us, we met with them, we talked to them, thought we had a, a good, you know, communication with them about what was needed, and it still kind of seemed not to go where it needed to, so, but hopefully we can get it resolved.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Dave, are the, the items that are in question, is this, are these safety concerns? You mentioned sinks, you mentioned the bar, not having the proper permits prior to that? Have the permits, are we working out the permit situation, and are these safety issues?
The, yes, I mean, there, you know, specific requirements for the plumbing and how it's put in to prevent, you know, disease transfer and stuff like that. The bar kind of just affects the layout and the seating capacity, which then impacts egress. So we were trying to make sure of what we have, and, you know, whether or not we've got the right doors and openers and stuff like that. So it does have, I mean, it's not immediate threat to the people that are inside the building, but it does have stuff that we need to work out for the building to continue to be safe, you know, as he grows and has more people there, so that's what we're trying to do.
Are they working on remedying, remedying that?
We, we've had conversations and information's been brought in, we're still kind of waiting to get to the, you know, finalize the permit and then do the inspections.
Does the applicant have a licensed contractor? So this is the same discussion we had a year and a half ago. So Arizona State Law, not, not Mr. Zellner, not anyone else, the Arizona State Law requires that any change in a commercial business require a licensed contractor. There's lots of reasons for that. One, liability, but also due process, for the process to work together for everybody. So I'd like to know, I mean, I would be interested if he has a licensed contractor and then they get the permit or take the photos and show before and after, and we get an inspection, and it could go pretty quickly. They may be in process and may have that, and that may help the decision for you. I know Dwayne could comment on that, or Steve?
Dave, excuse me, when I was reading through all of the information, it seemed like the occupancy number was going up, which was one of the main problems, besides doing all the work without the permits first.
Right.
Because this is sort of a deja vu from what we had a year ago as well. So it's not that...
Right, the dining room...
It's new that you need a permit before you start.
Right. The dining room cafe, my understanding was, had been at 49, which allows them to have only one exit. And so the, we're trying to stay under that, because if it goes above that, now it's a change of occupancy, a whole bunch of other stuff kicks in to exits and stuff like that. So the, you know, when there's specific requirements for exits, it's not just about the door, it's about the hardware and lighting and stuff like that, and what rooms you're passing through. So those are all the elements we're trying to, to deal with, and, you know, getting the right plans, knowing what's there in relation to that, and establishing the, the occupant load. So we typically, so the building code gives a couple options. It says you configure the occupant load based on the square footage, or we can, and do a lot of times, do it based on a floor layout or a table and chair layout from the applicant. Usually, table and chair will allow for a lower count, and we basically say, okay, we're gonna accept this, we've got it. It's stamped by, you know, architect or whatever, it be kind, kind of becomes the formal plan, and we typically can hold somebody to that. If we do it by just the square footage, it gives them a little more flexibility, but it also can kick in a whole lot of other requirements and have a lot higher number, which affects the number of toilets you have to have, doors, exits, all that. So, you know, we tried, we went through that, we went through some of the implications and stuff, if they opened it up into another space, what was gonna happen, and, you know, tried to make them aware best, the best we could of, you know, and I think they kind of elected to kind of stay right now in a narrower, you know, field. They were talking about adding or expanding it into another space, but in order not to trigger some of those other things that are fairly costly and, and that, they were gonna work within the thing. But we still kind of ended up with some stuff happening that we should have gotten the permits.
So even with the work that's been done and all of the conversations you've had, have they applied for a permit at all?
Yes, yes.
They had, and with a general contractor?
Well, so originally, we didn't really have a contractor. We got a plumber and electrician for those parts. The bar, you know, really falls under a different category, and so we've been trying to work that part out, too, so that we have somebody that's responsible for each one of those sections. So that's kind of what they've been working on is, is that. I guess there's an opinion among the contractors that they don't, that a bar doesn't need a permit, but that's not the way the code reads.
But they did have permits for the sinks and the things that you said were creating a safety issue.
They've applied, no, they've applied for them. We haven't actually issued the permit so that we can do inspections.
Let me change that question. They did have a contractor, a licensed contractor, you said, for the sinks and the things that you said were creating a safety issue.
Came in and provided us their name, I'm not sure that they did, are you, you know, we're not sure about who did the work yet, but they're taking responsibility for it.
Okay.
In process.
Any more questions for Dave? So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? We'll need your name and address.
My name is Steve Lightzel. I am the owner of 185 North Apache Trail, and also helping Dwayne out today. It is true, we did meet with Dave, and they've been very willing to work with us and help us, and I think there was a little bit of miscommunication early on. We were talking about actually going as business partners and opening and expanding the building. We found out that was just not financially savvy for any of us. So instead, Dwayne decided that he wanted to go in on his own and open it up. There was a little bit of miscommunication, I wasn't there for some of that, between emails and maybe some informal conversation in regards to what needed to be done. I don't want to say that he was misled, but I do want to say that there was probably some miscommunication on both parts that just wasn't really done in a formal manner. After the fact, yes, there's been some work that's been done inside the building, we're trying to rectify it right now to the best of our abilities, trying to find a general contractor that would be able to sign off on the bar and be able to work with Dwayne and, and the city going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Can I ask my question?
Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will close the...
I wanted to ask Kenny a question. Could you please come back a second?
Did she ask him one?
Yeah. You. I, I, I just want to know, who was misled? The city was misled, or Mr. Carbo?
I think it was the miscommunication. I don't want to say misled, that was probably poor judgment as far as terms, but just informal conversation, I do believe that he sat down or he ended up meeting with one of the secretaries. The secretary said that that shouldn't be a problem, and he took that word for gold.
So do you have the name?
I do not.
Who he talked to?
Dwayne May. But the also, the, the other thing that we were talking about is that we are not gonna be able to fit more than 40 people inside that room. That's plain and simple. Today, we had six business owners, we had Parks and Rec that had about eight people, and we had two people that were at the current bar just being served food, along with staff, which was three. That's a very tight spot. There is no way that you're gonna get more people in that. I believe Health Services already has signed off on it, correct me if I'm wrong. Pinellas County has already signed off on the bar and everything, and the way that the setup is, so they are okay with that.
So you're serving food, are you?
They are currently serving food. Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a business license in place? I would have to check.
We do.
We do? Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Your Honor. What was the change to the bar that, that created the issue with the city? Did you expand it? Did you make it bigger? Did you just put in a new bar?
I believe there's a little bit of change in electrical, it was going from, maybe from electrical outlets from here up to the top to allow TVs. There was existing plumbing that was in there that, that I believe they tied into with sinks, minus maybe the one that was on the backside, and then...
I don't think the previous business had a bar.
There was no bar.
Right, right, it's the new one.
Dwayne, Dwayne had a bar that was, that was received from Benson, brought it in and set it. And there is no electrical, there's no plumbing, there's nothing going through it, which we have talked to other contractors, as Dave spoke about earlier, and they, we're scratching their heads going, we're not really sure what to do about this, this is kind of a waste of our time. So it's very difficult to be kind of inside that position of, all right, the GC's saying one thing, and the city's saying another. We're having a hard time finding someone that will sign off on it, unfortunately.
General contractor has to go by the city rules, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is anyone else like to speak on this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion? Of course, I want to see all of our businesses succeed, and this is a, a new, a new menu that we don't have, so, and that very location has struggled over the years, so I'd like to see one in there successful. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Can I make a comment first?
Sure.
So, yeah, it's already been brought up that the owner of the business, who was here a year, year and a half ago, and was renovating Cobb's at that point, and it was brought up the same kind of issues that, you know, there was some questions as to whether there was permits and whether we were gonna have monthly updates and all this kind of stuff. And at that point, it's, it's not just about, it, it's about, we have rules within the city that, that all businesses have to follow, and we had a large, a long discussion last night about that, about being able to educate. And that's an issue that we are going to be having to tackle as far as the staff, educating the public and the business owners and future business owners, but, you know, when somebody's been through it before and then possibly has the same issues again, it just, we, we need to start thinking about that, and understanding that there are rules that the city has to follow, and that we ask all business owners to follow, and that we can't just, you know, it's, it's easy to ask for forgiveness, but it's easier to, sometimes it's easier to just get things done right the first time.
Well, I think what's happened in the past is the past, and that, the other one was an 80-year-old building, this is completely different, so I don't think we should carry, carry grudges over like that, and we want successful businesses.
There is no, there is no grudges. I'm not holding any grudges.
I just don't think that we should be bringing up the past. Each individual's situation should be addressed as each individual's situation, and I can understand why you might look back to try to find a pattern, but the issues that were created and started and resolved or not resolved at the old location are not the same as this location. And I don't think it's, I just don't see where it, it needs to tie into this. This is a separate issue, it's a separate location, let's deal with what we have in front of us now, not look back, we're moving forward.
Well, and I understand that, but we also don't have a permit yet. So could we delay this until the 21st? Is there enough time to ensure that we have a permit by then?
I don't know about the permit part, but if you, if you go too long, remember, you're, if you don't provide a decision within the application time period, then the state will say, oh, okay, Apache Junction says it's okay. It's deemed okay if you don't do it within 60 days of application date, I believe. So I, I think you might want to ask Mr. Zellner that question about the permit. I do not know the answer, so you may want to call him back up to discuss that, whether there's a sufficient time to get a permit and what the permit would cover.
Well, and what's held it up to this point?
The, the, the thing we're waiting on at this current time is the, the contractor to sign for the responsibility for the bar. So I think...
Any contractor?
There's still certain, no, no, that...
A contractor, a contractor, or a general?
It, I don't think it has to be a general, but it does need to be somebody related, you know, the, the state has their different categories, so this is kind of like trim and mill worker, carpentry, one of those. So it just, you know, we're looking for a licensed contractor to do that. We did get other information, and then we need to do the inspection, and I think we've got a couple things we'll have to resolve, but the permit can be issued, I'm sure, within, you know, the next, hopefully, couple days, and then sort out the other parts of it, so... Well, can I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, may I inquire of the witness? So is there time between now and the 21st to actually get a permit? I want to, I want to make sure of that, because I didn't hear the answer to that. Sorry.
So we could approve, knowing that it's coming?
Or we could, we could... Or we could, we could move it until the twenty-first so that we know that it is here and done.
I would recommend a continuance to the twenty-first so that hopefully there's a permit by then, and then you could move forward with your recommendation to the state.
That we could approve it as it is and then just with the promise that it's going to happen, so.
That is a policy decision, absolutely.
All right. I've already asked for a motion if someone would like to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to move that the application for the new Bar Six Liquor License emitted by Dwayne Earl Carbo for the Tipsy Cow Smokehouse and Spirits located at 185 North Apache Trail, Apache Junction be continued until our May twenty-first meeting for an opportunity to finalize a permit. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
And Mayor Sertie?
No.
Order three, Your Honor, motion carries.
Okay, so that will be continued. Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of proposed resolution number nineteen dash thirteen, request by McMillan Manufactured Homes, and we're going to have Sidney.
Mr. Mayor, if you may, if you, if you read the next item also, then you could have one public hearing on both items with separate motions.
Presentation, discussion, and public hearing and consideration for, of proposed ordinance number fourteen seventy-three, which is to rezone. So we'll talk about both of those.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. For the record, my name is Sidney Ryus, planner here on staff. Tonight, I would just be giving a short presentation on Goldview by Lennar, S D two eighteen and P Z five eighteen. The project is located on the southwest corner of Old West Highway and Goldfield Road. It is outlined in red in front of you. Current zoning for the project is B one. The applicant is requesting a zoning change to R S five P D. They are also asking for an approval of a preliminary plat tonight for a hundred seventy-nine, hundred seventy-nine lot residential subdivision. This slide has the current zoning that is surrounding the proposed project. To the north, we have Mountain View Lutheran Church Zone B one P D. To the east, we have R S G R vacant land, and to the south, we have vacant land as well, Zone B one P D and R S G R. To the west, we have a county island for single-family development. Here in front of you, you have the landscape plan and the proposed layout for the proposed subdivision. The applicant is proposing entrances off of Goldfield and off of Star, which will connect to Old West Highway. They're also showing lots of open space, I think it's six acres in total, and then a central park with a number of amenity features that the applicant will go over in detail. Here we have the monument signs that will be located near the entrances. The top picture there notes the entrance as a whole, and then the southern picture, or I'm sorry, the picture at the bottom there notes kind of a, more of a detail in terms of architecture and material type. As a part of this application, the applicant provided staff with floor plans and elevations. Lennar Homes is proposing five floor plans for this subdivision with three distinct elevations each and a number of color options. Staff has reviewed the elevations and are supportive of the architecture. As noted in the beginning of the presentation, the applicant is asking for a P D, a planned development, so they are deviating for the, from the zoning ordinance. They're asking for a couple or a few deviations from the zoning ordinance, which include a reduction in minimum lot size from fifty to forty-five, a minimum, a reduction in minimum lot area from five thousand to forty-six seventy-five, an increase in lot coverage from sixty to sixty-five percent, and a reduction in setbacks for, for the front garage, for the front livable, and the side and the rear setback. Also, as part of this process, this was posted onto the, on the site. Mailers were sent out to neighbors within three hundred feet radius, three hundred foot radius. This was advertised also in the paper, and staff has not received any comments from, from the members of the public, either in approval or, or against the project. With that said, staff is recommending approval to S D two eighteen and P Z five eighteen, subject to the very standard conditions found in your staff report. That concludes my presentation. I know the applicant would also like to give a presentation as well.
Would the applicant want to present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ralph Pugh, and I, my office is in Mesa. It's a pleasure to be here with Mr. Todd Skorle on behalf of Lennar Homes, now the country's largest home builder, along with Mr. Dennis Roberts, who is our civil engineer on the project. Mayor and council, you saw a glimpse of this project. It was conceived at the time the general plan amendment was processed and approved last year. We've been working diligently with the staff. We'd like to thank Sidney and the others in the Development Services Department for all they've done. Your Planning and Zoning Commission listened to this case thoroughly. We've had neighborhood outreach and nothing but positive support. I really do not want to take your time tonight and rehash this whole project. We'd be happy to if you want to, but the, the planned development is justified with the nature of the amenities that are provided, the design of the open space, the elevations of the product, the new electronics that are in all these Lennar homes, the, the Wi-Fi, the e-thermostats, the open the door automatically, I mean, everything you can think of is in these new homes. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will be quiet and encourage any questions that you might have, and urge your positive vote on both the zoning case and the preliminary plat. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
When are you going to start?
If you ask that question to Mr. Skorle, it would have been yesterday. It will be as soon as physically possible.
Which means what?
Todd, what, what, what are you thinking here?
Six months, three months, one month?
Well, if the staff will work overtime, you know, twenty-four seven, we could do that. Todd, go ahead.
Traditionally, it takes about six months to have a final plat in front of this board again, or this body again, and at that point, that's usually when our land development permits are issued by the city. And so we could probably start as early as six months.
Okay.
And that's land development, and it usually takes about nine, ten months to actually do the development before we have our models grand opening.
Okay.
So a year and a half?
Yeah, a year and a half.
Give or take.
You want it sooner?
Yeah, tomorrow would be good.
All right, we'll hear that.
I do build the models fast though.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I have a question for him. I kind of, I, I remember this a little bit from last year. Now, you had an entrance off of Star Road, right, coming around Old West Highway?
We do.
Now, I, there was talk about putting an entrance on, off of Goldfield. Has that been resolved, you guys?
That has been resolved. It's been located appropriately so it doesn't interfere with the raised median on Goldfield as it comes up to the Old West Highway departure, and it's far enough away from our southern boundary where it shouldn't impact ADOT.
So there will be an ingress, negress right there?
Full motion, yes, sir. There is a yellow center lane at that, on Goldfield at that point.
Perfect. Thank you.
I got one question on, I'm going to go on the Star Road. From where your lot ends going up to Old West Highway, are you going to work on that section of the road, because it's, I'm going to say, it's not being used very much, and it's not a very good paved road to carry a lot of traffic?
Well, our northern boundary is actually Southern Avenue alignment.
So nothing's being done further north?
Correct.
Going up to Old?
Well, actually, we are extending Star Road up to Old Highway.
You are extending it out? Yeah, okay.
Within existing right-of-way.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, was it going to be worked on as well, because right now, that section of Star Road is not very good at all?
We're taking it up to the highway. We are, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Maybe to clarify that, is it going to be a half-center line? Just, Sidney, can you help with that? Usually developers don't do full, and I just want to make sure there's expectations on everybody what's really going on.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe it's going to be the full section. We already have the right-of-way easement already in place. If I could have Dennis up here. Dennis negotiated that with the city engineer, so he could clarify that.
Sidney, you are better than that. That shows it all the way to work.
And we may have that answer for a final plat, too, so that's enough.
I do like the size of the homes, too.
And Mayor, members of the council, Brian did bring a, a good point up. This will be finalized, that final plat, so that's up in negotiation in terms of, really the details of the development will be done at the final plat stage.
Mayor, council, I'm Dennis Roberts, I'm with Atwell. I'm a civil engineer, project manager, engineer record on the project. The negotiation is to include a, a half-street up to Goldview Road. It's still being discussed if the full street will be provided, but during final plat and final design, we'll have that addressed.
Robert, is that?
Which road?
Star Road, north of our intersection of Star Road and Southern.
So this is where, so this is where your, your, your standards, your engineering standards, why you have the standard, you be consistent, a meal will be there, it will be consistent across the board, and that's, you know, that's what we'll be working on, and they've been great to work with as we work through the process.
Okay, once you get this going, we have a lot of state land to the south, and we think there'll be a chain reaction. Once somebody goes in there and gets a chunk of it, other people will want it, so we'd like to see you be first, maybe. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number nineteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving a preliminary subdivision plat for the Goldview subdivision in case S D dash two dash eighteen by McMillan Manufactured Home Development Company LLC and Lennar Homes, represented by Ralph Pugh of Pugh and Lake, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor?
So we've already had the public hearing on the next one as well, so we can go right into a motion on that.
Go into the motion on the ordinance, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fourteen seventy-three be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor? Reading of the ordinance by title only, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction zoning district map, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case P Z dash five dash one eight, a request by McMillan Manufactured Home Development Company LLC and Lennar Homes, represented by Ralph Pugh of Pugh and Lake, from general commercial B dash one to medium-high density, single-family detached conventional residences planned by Plan Development R S dash five slash P D, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
And now the motion.
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number fourteen seventy-three, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor?
Presentation and discussion on fiscal year eighteen nineteen council work plan. Honor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Anna McCray, Assistant to the City Manager, here this evening to provide you with an update, a third quarter update on your fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen city council work plan, starting with the mission and vision statement, which I think encompasses a lot of the work plan items identified in the work plan this fiscal year. To quickly recap, the work plan contains forty projects that were identified with input from your various departments and yourselves for adoption that require or would have council interaction in this fiscal year. Fourteen of those projects were anticipated for council interaction in this third quarter, which was the period of January one through March thirtieth. Quick update on the projects that were continued from the second quarter into the third quarter include the Dog Park. The Parks and Recreation Commission voted on a site and will present to the council here in this fourth quarter. And also, project number sixteen, the reconstruction of Main Drive from First Avenue to Broadway Avenue. The construction, the project has been awarded and the construction is expected to start this month. Those projects that have been completed in the third quarter are project number eighteen, the street preservation of Apache Trail from Meridian to Idaho, number twenty-five, the building permit fees, the code has been updated, and then twenty-six, the city code chapter nine health and sanitation regulations update, and twenty-eight, the fleet purchasing options. It was started in this fiscal year budget, moved away from the lease-to-purchase option, and will continue on for subsequent years. Third quarter projects that were continued include number four, the city leased Bureau of Land Management, and staff continues to issue bi-monthly status inquiries to the B L M. Number six, the Parks and Recreation Commercial Use Facility fees. The commission has made their recommendation for piloting commercial fees for the Parks and Recreation facilities, and staff will be seeking council discussion and direction at an upcoming meeting. Number twenty-two, the liquor license application process and related fees, the code update with the deputy city clerk position filled. The projects that are under the city clerk's department lead will start to progress now that that assistance is there. Number twenty-three, the zoning ordinance update. We previously, items twenty-three and twenty-four, the building code update, have kind of been deferred, the zoning and, excuse me, the zoning code and the wireless have been deferred as staff continue to complete the property maintenance code update that you've seen, the building permit fee update, the building code update, the adoption of the active transportation plan, development fee updates, and also the general plan update. Very busy, busy department. Also, the website remodel. I do know that staff had a conference call with our current provider, Civic Plus, to also look at the past year's activities, as well as review and renewal options and revamping in the cost of that, so they are working that. City code chapter fourteen, the cable television revision, staff is still researching, we'll have something shortly. Thirty-eight, the city public records request process update, and number forty, the city code chapter eight update on business licenses, again, with the hiring of the deputy city clerk, those should be forthcoming soon. Lastly, the mobile food vendors, the city code chapter eight update, staff is still working with the league and researching those necessary changes, and again, we'll have those forthcoming. That basically concludes the third quarter update. Next up, we'll have a fourth quarter update for you as this fiscal year concludes, possibly sometime in July, and also, we will start to gather input from departments on drafting a proposed city council work plan for your upcoming fiscal year nineteen twenty. May I answer any questions?
Any questions? Does it look like it? Thank you.
Thank you.